Forget every time.
I know you do.
We're good to go. Hello, everyone. We'd like to commence tonight's Select Board meeting being held tonight, Monday, February 13th, 2023, here in the Walk White Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. Broadcast live on local cable channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee's website. The time is now 6:30, and we'd like to convene meeting in open session. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with this one.
I'd accept a motion to approve the following minutes, Monday, January 9th, 2023, regular session amended.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom? John?
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous. Motion passes. I'd like to accept a, I'd accept a motion to approve Monday, January 23rd, 2023, regular session meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is this the Housing Trust two, though?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the Select Board, it's the joint meeting for the Select Board Affordable Housing Trust.
So moved.
Point of clarity. Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously as well. I overlooked the moment of silence, so if we could now take a moment of silence, I apologize. Thank you. As we move into the next topics, appointments and hearings, first we'll start off with public comment. We do have two people that have signed the, signed up to speak. We have Ken Dubrowski. If you could please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Ken Dubrowski, 3 Greatville Landing. What I'm about to read to you is a draft of a letter I'm going to send to the Mashpee Enterprise, probably next day or two, I think, yeah, after that minute by Wednesday. Anyway, here we go. Following quotes from Mashpee Town Manager Rodney Collins discussing the need for a prop two and a half override, as reported in the February three Mashpee Enterprise, quote, "We are in crisis mode. Year-round residents cannot foot the entire bill. The town has responsibilities too, and Mashpee has been behind the eight ball admittedly. Once the wastewater collection system is connected, more than 1 million will be added to the budget for the system's operation and maintenance." Unquote. "In the face of this bleak financial forecast, who thinks it's appropriate to spend $200,000 on a disc golf course? Answer: the Mashpee Select Board and the Community Preservation Committee." Okay, I am not opposed to disc golf, but it's a nice-to-have, not a must-have. "It is, however, an excellent example of Mashpee's fiscal irresponsibility, spending money our town manager says we don't have on something we don't need. We didn't get here overnight. See my letter published November 11th in the Mashpee Enterprise, which highlights the situation. The Select Board knew or should have known we were in a financial crisis when they decided to support this initiative. Why would you fund nonessential luxury items when you are in crisis mode? If this was your household budget, nonessential spending would be the first thing you would cut. Voters should support the Select Board's override request. We really don't have a choice. However, at the same time, we should demand specific spending guardrails, that is, spending should be restricted to essential existing programs and services, and clean water and affordable housing initiatives, no new spending, capital outlays, and any other areas. And why wait until fiscal 2025? These spending controls should be implemented immediately. If we wait until 2025, the hole we dig, oh, correction, the hole we need, we need to dig ourselves out of just gets deeper. If we are truly in a crisis mode, and I believe we are, you would think the Select Board would be proactive and implement spending control actions like those described above. Instead, it acts as if we are flush with cash. Again, it's not the disc golf course itself, it's the message you send to taxpayers when you support spending $200,000 on a nice-to-have, and three weeks later declare we are behind the eight ball. We no longer can assume the Select Board will act in a fiscally responsible manner. Recent behavior indicates they won't. The answer to the crisis can't just be tax increases. Spending controls must be included. Voters need to send this message to the Select Board. Town meeting is coming up, because as the disc golf course decision indicates, they will not get to that view on their own. Bottom line, when, when many needs are chasing few dollars, spending decisions reflect your priorities and values. The Select Board could have used the $200,000 for wastewater treatment costs, affordable housing initiatives. I'm the only guy here, so I'm going to take a bit more.
Are you almost done?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, that's the last paragraph. I'm actually going to prob, this is, this is like piling on. I think I might pull this one. Could have used a bet for future tax reb. By doing what they did, the Select Board is saying that disc golf is more important than wastewater treatment, affordable housing, tax and relief. Okay, it's unlikely, it's unlikely that the majority of Mashpee taxpayers feel the same way. Look, bottom line, you know, $200,000 on something that's a luxury item, and then three weeks later, you're telling us we're in a crisis mode. I've watched the, the 20, the meeting on the 23rd, you know, Mr. Collins admits, we are looking at a huge tax increase. It's not the $200,000, it's the message it sends. My God, I mean, you know, I just, I'm watching this thing, and I can't believe it. In the same meeting, you're talking about not being able to fund air conditioning for the schools.
I do have to cut you off, because we are over the three minutes.
Okay, but again.
But I appreciate your comments. We'll take them into consideration moving forward. CPC is actually fun, it's appropriated funds that are held in reserve, and the project met the criteria that, that spendable allowances, so I don't know that the CPC funds are discretionary to spend on wastewater or other things, you know, they would have to make the argument, so.
No, I knew we were going there, okay? But you got to remember, from the, from my perspective, I look at my tax bill, it's the Town of Mashpee.
I do.
Okay, and the CPC, the CPC can fund affordable housing, okay? And you, there was recently a thing that where you're bumping up something from some affordable housing project. Those funds could have been deferred from that. Alls I'm saying.
I appreciate your comments.
And it's not, again, I'm going to get out of here, okay?
Thank you.
It's not, it's the attitude it sends. I mean, you know, it's just like.
We hear you loud and clear.
You don't care. It's just, I'm frustrated. And, and just one last thing, and you think I'm frustrated at you guys, I'm not, okay? Most of my frustration is at me, because you know something? I voted for all you guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Lynn Barbie?
Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I'd like to take this opportunity to make what I consider a public service announcement. As many of you know, I went to all of the local comprehensive plan workshops, and one of the things that we heard repeatedly was the need for more available transportation, particularly for people who can't drive, seniors and others. Our senior center does a wonderful program of having volunteer drivers to take people to doctor's appointments. I do it, I'm doing one tomorrow, but we are really, really, really short on drivers. We need more drivers. You do it as a volunteer, you get asked when you're available, you don't have to do it if you're not available, or that doesn't work for you, but I really hope more people will check in at the senior center to the, what they call the driver program, because we really need more drivers. And that's my public service announcement.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I would like to just elaborate a little bit, since I was referenced. The town overall is in very good financial shape. What I would also point out is the town has identified itself as focusing on the priority, as it should, of wastewater. The town is getting prepared for wastewater, and the town will continue to be prepared for wastewater as we move forward. That is being planned. In addition to that, what I was a little concerned about is whether or not we are going to have the funds available operationally in 2025, given the fact that some of the bottom line to that budget is historically going to go up as a direct result of cost increases associated with various things. So although the gentleman certainly quoted certain things that are relevant, I think what I want everybody to understand is sometimes you can't take from one pile and transfer it to another pile. The pile that he's referring to, I cannot use for the purposes that maybe I'd like to have the flexibility to use it for. You know that, I think the rest of the board knows that, and I just want the public to understand that, because otherwise, they could get confused and say, gee, you're, you're literally taking disc golf and putting it as a bigger priority as wastewater, what you're not.
Appreciate it. Thank you for that clarity. That was all we had for public comment. Moving along, we have a 6:35, a public hearing, new livery vehicle for hire service application, Amy Perry Erickson. If you'd come forward and sit at the table. Clerk, could you read the public hearing notice?
The Mashpee Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the application of Amy Perry Erickson for operation of one vehicle for livery vehicle, livery vehicle for hire service. Said hearing will be held today at Mashpee Meeting Town Hall.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
So do you want to explain a little bit about what your?
What the business is?
What the business you're starting up, yes.
It's just basically a livery business to transport people from the town to Logan and T F Green Airports would be the main focus of the livery service.
So it's a cost service to standard livery?
Yep.
I'll first open it up to board members for questions.
I guess, I'm assuming insurance, liability, all that.
Insurance, all that, yep.
Because we don't, we don't get any of that, so.
Yep. Already taken care of, yep.
There was a person at the PD that used to process it. I don't know if they did this one.
I don't believe they, have you been in a police department?
No.
Yeah.
They had to approve your car and make sure your registration and you have insurance to cover.
And does the town require quarry checks and all that stuff?
There is a procedure over there, to answer your question, Mr. Chair, and the person that used to do it was Paul Bryant, but he's retired, so I don't know who's doing it now.
Right, but there is a policy and procedure.
Yes.
There's a procedure that you have to go through with now.
Okay.
And that's all been vetted out and?
If I could make a suggestion, maybe the board could approve it conditional upon the manager's office getting the approval from the PD.
Sounds fair. Anyone else have questions as a board?
No, good.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, I haven't asked the public for comment yet. Anyone from the public have questions or concerns on this matter? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the livery service.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, all those in favor, well, I'll do roll, roll call. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. I'd accept a motion to approve the, as the local licensing, licensing authority of the application of Amy Erickson for operation of the one vehicle for livery vehicle for hire service, conditional approval upon the police endorsement.
Okay.
That suffice?
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom? Michaela? I'm a yes as well, that motion is unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Good luck with that. You could just, you got her number.
The time is 6:40, we have another public hearing for the new Keno license application, Sri Kamakia Devi Incorporated, doing business as Mashpee Mini Mart. Sabod Basnet.
He's not here.
Not here? How's that work? Do we, we don't?
Yeah. Do you have any info?
What's this?
The Keno.
I'm not sure if they were asked to be here, I would assume they would have, because it is a public hearing, but I know that this was something that was brought to our attention through the state, and they just wanted to make sure that the board knew about it, and if they had any questions or problems with it, so we felt it was best to bring it before the board, for you guys to decide what you want to do. If you want, I can have it tabled and contact the person over here at Mini Mart and get it for the next meeting, if you'd like.
Did anyone have concerns with it? I mean, would we?
It's a small little place in, off of 151, and he's the one that usually chains his sign to 151 with the chains to the telephone pole, and then he has all the signs on his window, and we've had concerns with him before. So now he's, he's coming in and asking for a Keno license. I think we should have him come in.
Okay.
I make a motion to postpone.
At least he should come into compliance with the bylaws that exist today.
That's right. I agree. Thank you.
So we're going to postpone.
I'd accept a motion to continue the public hearing, to be determined.
Well, so moved. Usually when we continue, we just get it to the next date available.
I'm fine with that as well. So continued, we'll continue the public hearing for the Mashpee Mini Mart Keno applicate license until our next meeting, that's the 27th, right?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the discussion and approval of a special event application, the Mashpee Half Marathon, to be held September 23rd, 2023, Jeffrey Smith, if you'd come forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
You want to give a brief overview of?
Sure. My name is Jeffrey Smith. My company is Outsider Endurance. We're a, a multi-sport and endurance event company. We have events in Lakeville, East Freetown, New Bedford, and Mile Standard State Park, and I'm looking to make a fifth event here in the town I love being a part of, Mashpee. So the event is scheduled to start and end at Mashpee Town Beach, using a very similar route to a race that's no longer in Mashpee, the beach and back route. It's been approved in the past, so I went with that route for simplification. The only difference is I start and end at the beach off-season with minimal interruption and footprint down there. The police have, already have a, police details in kind of a working record for that one, 13 to 14 details. Sanitation and trash removal are very important to me, as are all conservation issues. That's one of the reasons I want to have it in that area. I think it shows our town, one of the best parts of our town is the access to natural resources and public land. I emailed over the route, safety plans, insurance information. This event will be sanctioned with USATF, USA Track and Field. It's a pretty comprehensive policy detail in there.
Your application unfortunately is not complete. You haven't completed with the DPW and the fire.
I emailed back to, I think her name is Catherine, with the DPW, on January 25th. I sent, I have a copy of the email I can forward over as well. Her requirements were me funding sanitation, trash removal, portable toilets.
Message boards.
A parking plan and a message board, which I agree to all of those.
It looks like the fire is looking for.
I also emailed, I'm sorry to interrupt, I also emailed them back on January 20th, Chief Phelan, I believe is his name.
Phelan.
Phelan, excuse me. He was asking what my plan was. We're looking for one EMT team to be at the start-finish line for a four-hour shift.
And do you have permission to park three to five?
I have a permit in with DCR currently, that's included in the email as well.
You, I'm sorry.
We still need to have Catherine.
Do you have a personal permit or permit for this event?
For which one?
You said in the parking lot.
For DCR, yes. I have a permit for this specific event, working to get it sanctioned with USATF, the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, as well as the Town of Mashpee.
So they know there's going to be like 300 vehicles?
Correct, well, they, it's in queue, it's not approved, but the, the application, it talks to the exact same cap participant and spectators, a set-up time, the same parameters of time, they, they know. So the backup plan for any overflow parking would be, if, if needed, the goal is to have people carpool, which, you know, hopefully will work, because I know there's a limit of people compared to the cap of participants I have, would be to put a DPW permit in for school parking and rent shuttle service to and from the event to keep in accordance with any types of public land or public access.
I'm, can I?
Yes, Mr. Town Manager. Where would this parking be?
To park at Quashnet and then take, rent and insure, obviously, like 16 passenger vans to and from the start line, for anybody that was overflowed.
But have you discussed this with the school?
Well, I have not, because I don't know that it's going to be necessary. I think I can do a good enough job.
If it's on a Monday, it's going to be necessary.
It's on a Sunday.
Oh, I thought it was a Monday.
Sunday, September 23rd.
I'm sorry. Where did I read Monday?
For myself, I, I do feel like, you know, there's a couple of outstanding matters that I think we'd be premature in approving without written confirmation.
Sure.
It should be included in the packet, you know, I, I think there's time to do that. So, you know, I, I don't, I fail to see the rush to do it tonight. I, I'd much rather have you go through the steps.
May I respond to that? I've, I've had this application put in on September 21st. This is, it's taken me this long to get to this point, I'm not sure what else I can do with the town. Poor Stephanie Collins hears from me multiple times a week, I'm, I don't know what I can do.
With regards to the fire, whatever your action plan is to address the EMS issue, have something in writing from Chief Phelan, and then with the DPW director, you know, itemized breakdown of her concerns, being addressed and her responding that she's comfortable with that would suffice, and, and that should be attached to the, to the application.
I agree.
You know, I, I feel like, you know, you, you could work through those things, and you're on your way to doing so, it's, but when you say some of the routes haven't been approved and things like that, it causes a little hesitation.
I certainly understand that, and I, I'm surprised I was still on the agenda for tonight with those items. I can send you email chains of what I've been trying to.
If you could work, work with Town Manager's office to?
I, I believe somebody from my office had indicated that maybe not put you on the agenda tonight was better, and you want it to be on the agenda, that was my understanding. But at any rate, we'll get it squared away. Why don't you give my office a call tomorrow? I'll give you my card.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding anything?
No, I think it's great. Pretty, I mean.
I like the concept of what you're trying to do, and, you know, all for healthy events that, you know, bring attention to our conservation areas and access to public lands and conservation lands, you know, it's a healthy activity. I, I want to support it.
Thank you.
Once, once we take care of the due diligence piece.
See, it seems like the ball's in the town's court, and you.
I, I don't mean that to be disrespectful to the town at all, the people I've dealt with have certainly been responsive. It's, it's my first experience dealing, you know, with the town in something like this, so I'm, you know, I'm not sure what is normal, what's not normal. I don't mean to be, you know, say anything negative about anyone that I've dealt with so far, and I hope that doesn't come off that way.
It's a lot of moving parts and stuff coordinating something for the first time, but I think you, you're on the right track.
On a daily basis, a half marathon's probably pretty low on that priority list, so I understand that as well, so.
Sounds like a great idea. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
We'll get it squared away.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion or approval of the Hazard Mitigation Plan Planning Committee?
You just want us to approve the committee?
Did you want to speak to it at all, elaborate a little bit?
No, I just know that.
Just for public record?
It was suggested by the consultant.
So the, the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, I think to receive hazard mitigation funds, you have to have an approved plan, so to my knowledge, the town's required to put together a committee to work on this, per the consultant represented by Jamie Kaplan Consulting LLC. The recommendations for the record are Rodney Collins, Town Manager to serve on the committee, Wayne Taylor, Assistant Town Manager, Chief Jack Phelan from the Fire Department and Emergency Management, Chief Scott Carline, Police Department, Clay Nicholson, GIS Coordinator, Evan LaHeur, Town Planner, Catherine Laurent, Public Works Director, Ashley Fisher, Natural Resources Town Planner, Kathleen Laurent, Public Works Director, Ashley Fisher, Natural Resources Director, Andrew McManus, Conservation Agent Zachary Seabury, Health Agent, um, and then a representative to be determined, uh, from the tribe, uh, planning, a community development member, uh, and resident recommended two, three members at large, um, as residents, uh, to comprise the committee. Does the board have any questions or concerns with the composition as stated? Hearing none. I would, um, accept the motion to approve the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, um, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could you possibly just add for me or designate?
I would accept that amendment.
And, and, um-
For the recommendations of Town Manager.
And if any select board member would like to sit in for me, then I'd be more than happy to entertain that, uh, phone call. I mean, I, I, it's just a busy time of year and I, I don't wanna miss a meeting. Thank you, sir.
Motion to amend, uh, I, uh-
Amendment committee.
Motion to amend the committee per the recommendation, uh, Town Manager or as designate?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, uh, roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? I'm a yes as well. So I think that, that's an amendment, that does a vote to amend. So now we're back to, uh, base motion. So I, I'd accept the motion to, um, approve the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee as presented with edits.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, um, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? I'm a yes as well. That motion's unanimous.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Introduction and discussion with the Town Health Agent, Zach Resebury?
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to your first Selectman's meeting.
Thank you.
So, um, it's the first time meeting with us. Um, I know there's several matters that have, you've been tasked with. Um, I'm sure the board has questions. And, uh, John's chomping at the bit over here. So, uh, we'll get right into it. Um, any board members have questions?
Whenever, I can go, whatever. All right. So, uh, first of all, thanks for coming in tonight. Um, I'm not sure how, I'm assuming you're already brought up to, brought up to base with as far as, um, we had to bring in some scanning capabilities to look at, um, yes-
Yes.
cesspools.
Yes.
allocations, how many are in town? Have all those results been tallied? Are we expecting those shortly?
We ran into a snag with that, uh, position. Um, we were, we, we thought the person that was hired to do the job was doing it correctly after months and weeks of training and help from our department, from the planning department. Uh, and then when we got the final result, we checked a few of them. They were wrong. Uh, so we had hundreds, uh, of wrong addresses of what was cesspool, what was not. That person was let go.
Yep, let's get that out.
That's as far as I'll-
Yeah, we'll skip that out.
Yeah. So we, Sandra and myself, Sandra is the clerk for my office, uh, have been going through them, uh, when we can, to see which ones are correct and which ones are not, but it's pretty much starting from scratch again.
Dude, is, is there an expected timeframe? I mean, just so you're aware, I know this is not your problem, because you just came in, but this is years now. It's not months. And the Town Manager's face, he understands.
And, and when this occurred, I sat in my office and said, you, you gotta be kidding me. So I feel your pain. Um, but we did run into a little snaffle that I don't wanna elaborate on, but, uh, I think we're hopefully moving in the right direction to get some answers that you've been looking for, for over a year.
And this is specific to what?
He was looking for particularly-
Assessing how, how many cesspools we have in town, which, you know, we did that, um, two years ago.
And within a certain distance of water.
Within 100 feet of waters.
Water, yeah.
I mean-
Because the information that's out there is, you know, it's been sent to us and some correspondence from, um, um, vigilant town residents, um, that have said, referenced it as a document stating that there's 59, uh-
Oh, no, we, well, no, so we-
Septics within 100 feet of, uh, town waters. And that number's been thrown around. Is that, so what you're saying is that's not accurate?
No, but what happened was-
Or you're looking for just how many cesspools in general throughout town?
So this is probably two-plus years ago.
It was two-plus, yeah.
Um, we asked the Board of Health Agent at that time to do an assessment, uh, and we were concerned about, um, cesspools that weren't being managed, potentially, um, and that were, um, within 100 or 300 feet of waters, rivers, streams. Obviously, not knowing how many cesspools are in town. Like, but they did the assessment of, we didn't even get the complete results, because it, they realized there were no records. Um, and what the, you know, what you have to realize is, anytime you're a septic, um, or Title V is pumped, it's reported to the town. So-
But then we found out it's not always reported to the town.
Well, we don't, so what happened was then inside of their, the information they provided, um, the Board of Health Agent at the time, we realized that there was a high percentage of the cesspools that were reported to be known, um, there was no record, record of-
Them being pumped.
Better than 50% of those recorded cesspools that we're aware of were not even pumped in over 10 years.
So one question, when, when we say that, you know, um, what comes to mind is the requirement is for septic haulers to do business in town. Septic haulers are required to, uh, provide the addresses of what was pumped. And they're supposed to provide that to who specifically? A licensing board within the town?
Yeah, so, so the state code, Title V code is that, and if you pump a system, you're supposed to submit the pumping records of where it went, how much it was, and who's it, who, where it came from, to the health department within 14 days of the pumping.
And so where, I, I'm wondering where we're lacking. Is it a procedural issue internally, uh, that, that we're not, uh, requiring that of licensed contractors when, within town?
But we require it. They, and we receive-
They're just not doing it on the-
Yeah, sometimes, uh, some companies, because we don't know when they're going to pump, who hires them, at what time to go pump, uh, so we have no tracking of them getting called out to go to a house. Um, so all we get is when it, when they drop off the slip or if we see the Title V report that says that it was pumped at this time, 'cause they, they have it pumped when they have the Title V inspection done. Then we know that it was pumped at that time, so we know a slip should be coming in within 14 days of that pumping.
All, all contractors that are allowed to do work in, in town have a copy of these procedures?
Yes. Yes.
So I'm wondering if we do an update that requires them to report quarterly? Just to ensure, there has to be some procedural changes and notifications sent out to get this process working properly. So what are we doing to, to effectually, uh, change?
Well, when, when they get the license each year, we, we tell them, we give them the updated, um, regulations if anything's been changed. They all have been doing it for years. I haven't since I've been here, well, I don't know if they go out to do pumping, so I couldn't tell you. All I do is know is that when we, when we receive them. Uh, we could ask them for quarterly of where they pumped in town and match it up, uh, with the ones that we receive. When we receive them, they go into a spreadsheet, so that way we can open the spreadsheet, uh, do Control F for that one address, and it comes up with everything that was pumped on that one address.
Town Manager was first.
My question is, do you feel, in your professional opinion, that, uh, the numbers that we have are truly accurate?
For the pumping?
Yes.
I do. Every, every house is different for pumping. Um, state, they don't have this, a set time for pumping for houses. They have a recommendation, three to five years. Um, if you have a household that has a three-bedroom house, but you only have two people living in it, um, you're not gonna pump every three to five years. I myself pumped for the first time at my house, uh, after 10 years. Um, and it came back, it was just scum at the top and no concerns whatsoever. Whereas if you have a house of three bedrooms with, uh, four kids and two grownups, you're gonna have a lot different, uh, waste going into that toilet. So they're gonna need more pumping before you have an outbreak onto the ground. So, and it all depends on the system. If you have, say, an old cesspool, you have roughly 600 gallons per day because of the size. Uh, but you have a three-bedroom house, because they made them so large back then. Um, where, then you have a regular septic tank, could've had it from the eighties where it's a thousand-gallon tank, so you have a lot less holding, 500 gallons less than what's allowed now going into a stone and pipe. So you could have, it, it all, what I tell people when they first buy a house and they ask what the pumping should be done, say, wait a year, have it pumped. And then when the pumper comes out, ask them what they think, because they're the ones seeing what you've done to that system in the first year. And they'll be able to say, hey, you know what? You might be able to make it four years without a pumping if it's continued with this type of use. But as far as what I've seen from the records we've been receiving, um, I mean, like I said, I, I don't know when they're going out to places, so I have no way of tracking that if they go out to a place and don't return it to us.
My, my, my concern is, um, you know, less so much on, on that as much as, you know, within 100 feet, if there's 59 homes within 100 feet of waterways, then I see that as a public he- health, uh, issue and, and we need to ban septics. Uh, I would like, and I've spoken with Town Manager about it, you know, I, I don't want to force the people to, to upgrade the systems to innovative, alternative, uh, Title V or, or what have you, and then require them to tie in additionally. I, I don't see that as fair. Um, I'd like to explore, you know, what funding mechanisms we can come up with, uh, to, to help offset the cost and maybe the town pays for one, um, whatever's lesser of the two. Um, we also need to have a comprehensive wastewater plan, um, that identifies the phasing of our wastewater to see what areas are going to be done and not gonna be done and the timeline of that to influence where priority areas are. So, I mean, you know, that's, I think if we were to ban it and get these septics upgraded, you're gonna see a huge, uh, improvement in the bays and rivers, um, by doing that. And, you know, we're at the point where, you know, it's a public health, uh, emergency to do that. So I don't know what we have to do to get there, but I know you've had the concerns with that as well.
Well, the whole, I mean, like I said, this has been going on for two-plus years, but, so, right now, we need to know what we have.
Mm-hmm.
Where are the cesspools?
So, right now, our, the goal, number one goal for, which has been for two years, has, okay, how many cesspools are in town? With this scanning capability, what we were hoping to get was, okay, you know, 10,000, 10,000 homes, you know, we have 500 cesspools. We have so many Title V's. We have so many IAs. That's dream, maybe it's dream world, but that's, hopefully we can get a better picture of that. But it starts with, first off, how many cesspools do we have in town? We, until we know that number, we, we can't even talk about a plan, because what we do know is the assessments that were done was within 100 to 300 feet of our waters and lakes and ponds. And the problem is, it was, the percentage of non-pumping was way too high, which means as far as 10 years, not being pumped. Now, we don't know if maybe there is a situation where there's a companies that are pumping, um, and not reporting. Maybe the cesspools have been there for so long, which if it's a cesspool, it's been there over 50 years, it's basically, literally-
Going in the water.
Going right in the water. Um, and that was brought up by the, at, at our Selectman's meeting, probably about a year and a half ago. Um, the fact is, I just would like to see some serious urgency on this matter as far as getting accountability for what we have for septics, Title V's, cesspools. I wanna know, I, I think the board would like to know, so we can then decide what we're gonna do about it. But right now, we, we have no idea.
So you're only looking at homes built before a certain date? I mean, uh, once the Title V law came into place, any homes after that should be compliant?
Problem is, if it's kept in the family, it didn't-
But I mean, homes constructed after a specific date.
Correct.
Yeah.
Don't contribute to the 10,000 number, uh, just hypothetical round numbers. I mean, you're only looking at houses built before a specific date. So that diminishes that number down somewhat.
Well, well, based off of what, uh, Mr. Cotton was asking for, he wants the count of cesspools, Title V's, what's hooked up to sewers, so we're looking at every single property. And when I first came into town, this project was hammered into me that you guys wanted this project done. So I, we were gung ho on it, but, um, we ran into the situation where all of the information, I thought I was ready to send to the Town Manager, I was excited to. Then I started scanning through them, finding wrong completely and going through certain files. And we've had, uh, out of 1,000, a couple hundred of them wrong. So I didn't wanna give you the wrong information.
I appreciate your diligence.
Mr. Chair?
Oh.
Michaela, I think had her hand up first.
Just, um, I know you haven't been here that long, but I just wanted to know what procedure are you putting into place now? And would it make more sense, um, when you talk about the urgency, to perhaps start with looking for the cesspools, which admittedly are going to be a smaller number and are probably causing more damage to the water than Title V? Um, would it make sense to start that rather than the entire, uh, rather than identifying all the cesspools and the septics?
It's the same process. The unfortunate thing is, it's basically, here's the residents, okay, so you know the information, you're gonna find out what they have.
Yep.
So now it's just, it's recording it. So the unfortunate thing is, you, and you're right, um, Mr. Chair, as far as, um, if it's a newer household thing, you can, you can, okay, move it on, move on. It's, you know it's not a cesspool.
So we're looking for cesspools? Okay.
That's the goal, but they have, unfortunately, it's a property, property, property.
Well, I mean, assessors could, could, could give you a short list of homes constructed after a certain date and prior to, so you prioritize and narrow the list somewhat to make it a little more manageable. And then, you know, as follow-up, after you go through that initial exercise of identifying the cesspools, then you go back and supplement the data with, you know, when was your home constructed? You know, how old is the Title V? You know, have you had it pumped out? All, all the additional information. You know, it, it should always, it should be a living document where you're continuously updating the information and, and, and trying to, uh, hone in on insufficiencies. Tom?
Yes, thank you. So, my, when I, when I listen to it, I mean, we all know that the, uh, the cesspools are the worst of the, um, systems. Should they be pumped every year? Is, and what would be the cost? You must have a better idea of what, what the cost of their 1,000-gallon tank or 500. Is it, is it 300 bucks, 200 bucks?
I, I couldn't tell you.
Does that sound about, I think, an average system is probably-
Last time I pumped mine was 1,000 gallons and it cost me about 250.
Right, right. So somewhere around there. I don't think it's asking too much to do it on a yearly basis.
I know, Tom, but the problem is, we don't know where the cesspools are.
You don't know where they are.
That's what we're trying to get.
But when you do, I think we ought to have something...
We're trying to get there.
And if they can't find it, you're going to have to put something in there, you know?
So, so, what, just to back up what we are actually doing to answer all of your questions, we are trying to find where the cesspools are. We have to go through each property to see what they have that are next to the water, because some of the data, depending on age, cesspools went all the way up to the, almost the early 80s, but also Title V systems that meet Title V requirements went all the way back to the 60s. So we have that period of time where we have to look at each single property and see what they have, because we have to look through the whole folder of the whole file to make sure we don't miss a single thing. If we have someone that goes through it and sees that they see, okay, well, they have a pit. A pit is not a cesspool. A pit is a concrete honeycomb, which is a Title V compliant. So we have to make sure that they understand that they're not putting that in the cesspool aspect. As far as pumping every year, we could make that regulation to have every single pump every year, but the tank is always going to be full. The septic tank will always be full, so if you have them pump every single year, 90% of that pumping is going to be straight water. So that's why you'll see the pump trucks was what we call a slushy maker. It's a giant weed whacker with a drill on the bottom to get up the stuff at the bottom, and that's the only reason, that's the separation between a cesspool and a septic system, a Title V, is that the Title V has a tank that separates the solids from the liquids, but all the nutrients are still going out into the field just like a cesspool is. So, but we can remove the solids, so that way you have a longer life of the septic system, although cesspools last a lot longer for some odd reason, I don't know why, because they just, they have more holes and they can pour out, and if you do dig it up, you have the sand at the bottom of them. So a cesspool is technically just a leaching field without the tank. That's essentially what a cesspool is. If you would like, we could look into, see what it would take to have pumping every single year, and...
Do you think there's a benefit to the pumping every year?
I know people that pump every year, and they come and tell us about their pumping every year, but it all depends on use. Like I said, some people don't need to pump for years because their system flows perfectly fine, because when you're trying to do is you're trying to pump out the sludge that floats to the top and the, pardon my language, the crap that sits at the bottom. You're not really going, the liquid at the center is what leaches out. So if you're pumping yearly, you're not really getting the benefit of the, or the bang of your buck, because you're not really having a lot settle down at the bottom.
So, I mean, minimally, within, if you're within 100 feet of water or 300 feet of water, and you have a septic system, then you should be mandated to pump annually. That would have some sort of benefit, no?
I mean, yes. Anytime you pump out the system and you get out the solids and the liquids as much as possible, that just means that your leaching field's just taking a lot less, or taking two days' worth less a year out of, out of the tank. Each time you, your tank is supposed to hold two and a half days' worth of sewage for your flow rate of your house, so if you pump it once a year, you're saving your system two days' worth of septic flow.
I, I mean, I, like I said, I don't know what funding mechanisms, I know we talked about it, are out there to try to help ease the burden of upgrades, but upgrades is where we need to be, and that's something that, you know, it's overdue, and it's, people are looking for us to take action to address these, you know, rest his soul, Mr. Howes would come in and he's telling us our bays are becoming eutrophic, they're at a critical point, and this is something that I don't think has to go to Town Meeting. You know, the Board can make the finding that, you know, septics are a public health emergency, they need to be addressed, and we ban them. I'm not sure if you've looked into identify funding, you know, that would help ease that cost, but I think that's the primary issue I have with it, is how to fund betterments. And if we can, that's, I need to kind of know what that is in order to support banning them within 150, 300 feet, but that's going to make a huge impact right away, right away, in the water quality, I believe, in my opinion.
No, the upgrading to IA systems is the way to go, and the state is working on making that happen as we speak. Just haven't heard from them since December on where they are with their new regulation to have everybody upgrade to IA systems, and we don't know how that's going to be enforced, and then we don't, the funding is, like you said, it's, you have some people that you just, they don't have the funding to upgrade to that type of system. We have a project on one of the houses right now, they know, they have to upgrade their system as of right now, but they know they're in the Phase Two or Phase Three, Two-B of the sewer system. There are technologies that you can drop into your tank, but we don't know what the DEP is going to require for the nitrogen removal limit. So we could make people, we could make a regulation to have, hey, you have to upgrade to an IA system, but if we set a standard for a limit of nitrogen, then we would, we'd have to really look at what the DEP is planning for their limit, because we don't want to make people upgrade right now, and then in four years have to upgrade again, because the system we made them put in is not good enough for what the state's going to require. I agree. I grew up on the Cape, I fish out here my whole entire life, born in Falmouth, I love the waters here, and we do need to fix them. And I'm working on that spreadsheet. I've been here four months, and we've worked really hard on it, and then we ran into that snafu, so we're going to get back into running. We got the job description a little bit more fine-tuned for the person that will be taking over, but the clerk and myself are also working on it now when we have a little bit of time in between what we're doing day to day.
But my thing is, I don't want to move at the pace of the state.
No, I understand that.
We can do this, I think, as the health agent, you can make the determination, based on all the years of reports that we have, that we're in a critical moment, and it's a public safety hazard to continue to have septics and cesspools, rather. And I think that, you know, making that kind of determination, we have to make correct, take corrective actions. So Five isn't going to do it, you'd have to set it at Three in order to, you know, make corrective, take corrective measures. So, you know, let's take the initiative and set it to Three, and, I mean, limited, I'm not trying to do the entire town. I'm concerned primarily with the areas around the waterways, because that's the most critical areas that are deteriorated.
Mr. Chair, if I could, what do you think that buffer is around the waterways? I mean, what kind of a...
Phosphorus only travels 100 feet, right? I mean, 75 feet, 300 feet phosphorus? And then nitrogen travels further, I believe.
Yeah, well, it all depends on the soils that it's in and the groundwater that it connects to, because if you get a, you get a more silty soil, you're going to trap the phosphorus, because it's a solid, you're going to trap it a little bit quicker, but Cape Cod sands, it's not really silty at all, so you have about two minutes per inch flow rate, it can travel pretty far.
So I'm looking at it from a general sense, not, you know, the perk of every individual lot, but just from...
Yeah, no, generally, Mashpee is...
From a general sense, the Cape Cod sands is the problem, and, you know, knowing that, we need to take the most strict measures, because most of the time, laws and regulations are written in a minimal sense, then they're applied minimally, and then there's loopholes for people to get around, then they're not enforced, so you're never going to meet the spirit of the regulations, and that's where we're at. We know that. The ponds and every, the waters are all telling us that. So go with the strict, most strict thing you can do, the technology will allow, and set it at Three. Let's set it at Three, and then, and then people are going to have to, you know, get on board, and I'd like to be able to afford them, throw them a lifeline to help pay for it. I don't want to require them to do it twice, you know, be mandated to do it twice, tie into sewer right after they've done upgrades, but, you know, mandating it, I think is essential to us taking some sort of action right now, and it doesn't have to wait until Town Meeting, is my opinion. You know, I would fully support you and your decision, and I think most members would, to take that kind of initiative, I don't want to speak for other members, but, you know, if it's within our power to do so, let's, let's take the action.
Okay.
You know, would, I don't want to speak for other Board members.
Well, we're still at the situation, we can't do any of, until we know what we have, and right now, in my opinion, we still got to figure out where the cesspools are in town, because...
But you know your wetland boundaries.
Yeah, but I know, but you're, you're right, and we do, we have a lot of rivers, we got a lot of streams, that according to the original results we did, that we did a 100 and a 300 buffer from rivers, streams, that we didn't, never got there, so this is two years now, I get it. So the thing is, we just have to figure out how, where the cesspools are in town.
I disagree. I feel as though, you know, we know the wetland boundary, we know the contaminants that go into the water, we know that Brian Howes coming in every, every year and told us that the waters are declining and they're becoming eutrophic, and the phosphorus is, you know, you're getting Sino in the middle of, in June, the front end of the summer.
But what are you going to do?
So, so you don't need to get a count and identify where they are, you just ban within 100 foot, 300 foot, whatever.
Who are you going to ban? You're just going to put it in the paper and say, you're banned if you have a cesspool, but we don't know who they are. That's the problem. Without these results, we don't know where these cesspools are. We don't know.
To enforce it, but if you ban it, then people are going to get the message that they have to upgrade, and at least will be on their radar, and they may take the initiative to do it.
Well, cesspools already are not allowed in the town of Mashpee, so when we get a Title V that says they're a cesspool, they're an automatic failure and have to upgrade. What this goal is, is to find out who has a cesspool that hasn't had the Title V done, so we can send them an order letter saying, your system is in violation of the Mashpee Town Regulations stating that title, that cesspools are not allowed in the town.
But they're not identified. Why do, why is it that you have to find them? If you have the documentation that says that they do have a cesspool...
We don't have the documentation yet.
Oh, you don't? There's nothing?
That's what we're working on right now.
Michaela?
I'm wondering procedurally if, I worry with the same sense of urgency that the Chair expressed, so I'm wondering if there's a reason to, and maybe I misunderstood, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what you said you're doing, what we were doing previously, is identifying all of the cesspools and the septic. I'm wondering as, if we could kind of act with more urgency, and as we identify, send that letter out, so that we're not waiting to know exactly what we have for cesspools and so, and cesspools and septic, but rather, as we identify that there's a cesspool here and it's close to the water, that, that letter goes out to that person immediately. So we're acting as we're doing the research. Is there a reason we can't do that?
We most certainly can do that. We could draft up a letter and have the Select Board take a look at it with the Board of Health and approve the letter, and then once we find it, we can send it out. My understanding when I came in and learned about this project was that the Select Board just wanted the list at that time, within four months of what we had, and then we were going to act on it. But if you'd like me to speed up the process, and as we go through and find the cesspools, after we go through, after we get the power, the manpower to do, finish the work on the project more smoothly, we can have that letter sent to those people.
I'd like to see mandated upgrades and then do a phased approach, you know, have a plan where you go after specific sections of town around some of your most critical areas, and you start, as Michaela said, you start, you know, doing the phased approach of sending notifications based on the revised mandates.
So, so we're blending the, the action with, with the research of identifying, and that way, the action's in place, and I, and I agree with you, to identify all of them is critical, but let's not wait until we identify all of them, and let's do, let's do one at a time.
I don't want to wait until we have a full report of all in town. That's what I don't want to wait for. I'd rather do a phased approach.
I agree, do them one at a time, let's get this moving. The sooner we act, the more effective we'll be.
Okay.
Pick one river corridor and, you know, start, start at the head and work your way to the bay and, you know, whatever that is, you know, but if we could move forward with...
And I think the focus is water waste.
Yeah, it's always been.
Especially where we're not, areas that are not going to be sewered right away, that would be important.
I'm not limiting it to bays, though.
No, no, no.
Like a nitrogen plant, I mean, I'd like to start, you know, the Mashpee watershed corridor, the Quashnet River watershed corridor, you know, Child's, Santuit, the, you know, those watershed areas. Michaela?
My other question is, is about the process with regard to where we are with bringing this person in who is going to support you. Is that, is that person on board, or is that person coming on board soon?
We're in the selection process. I haven't gotten an update on it.
Thanks.
So, just, just to clarify, so, because I'm going to start working on that this week, for the letter for the upgrade, even the people that are going to be sewered in the next few years?
Yes.
You want them upgrading to an IA system?
No, I don't think so.
Not a, not a D-Nite, I mean a...
I think that, I think that, I think that, that kind of should influence your prioritizing of areas.
Outside of Phase One and Two.
So, I mean, if you get outside of Phase One and Two and start looking at Phase Three areas, then, and maybe that's your initial place to start, that, I think that would be wiser than starting in a Phase One, Phase Two area, no?
Okay. I just want to make sure that when I write these letters, that we're going to say, you have to upgrade to an IA system even if you're hooking up to the sewer system.
No, you don't want to do that.
That's what I'm saying, I, if you're, if you're, if you're part of Phase, I wrote this down. Mr. Chair, do you mind? So actually, I wrote this down early today with anticipation of hopefully getting a little bit better information, but ban of cesspools in Mashpee, if a cesspool is present in, in Phase One or Phase Two, a cesspool can remain, but mandatory proof of pumping must be provided every 12 months until connection to wastewater, until connected to the wastewater system if possible. All cesspools proposed outside Phase One and Phase Two provided a mandate to upgrade within 12 months, and I go, these are just my thoughts, upgrade of the system cannot be within a Title V syst, with a Title V system, must be a new innovative system approved by the Board of Health. Also, a further ban, further on all Title V systems in the town of Mashpee, for example, as of this date, no project will be approved with, without a new IA Board of Health-approved system. Boswell County Loan Program, to update that as far as cost-wise, they said officially it would be, at the legislative meeting I had on the other day, that they have low interest, as low as 0% loans available, they said officially it'd be by March 1st, everything will be all set. So, and again, so outside of Phase One and Phase Two, as far as I'm concerned, I think the least common denominator, Title V should be no longer in Mashpee. I think this, we need to act, to your words, you know, at the same time, it's still getting an assessment of all cesspools in town, but any cesspool that exists in Mashpee, they should be outlawed and they should be given 12 months to update, and that update, if it's outside of Phase One and Phase Two, it should be a new IA system. Now, financial assistance, maybe we can figure something out with, you know, I don't, I don't disagree, because, but inside Phase One, and hopefully if we can get to Phase Two, you know... 1, and hopefully if we can get to Phase 2, you know, I get it, it's, you know, you don't want to have them pay for an IA system, and then, because then we have to let them keep that and not connect for so many years to our wastewater system.
And I, I don't know if we, you know, if, if, um, Ray Jack has, or the town managers earmarked the monies that we get from the Cape Cod Commission mitigation, nitrogen mitigation to anything as of yet, but maybe that goes back into the county bucket for betterments, you know, if there's board action to do that, and that's something viable, um, and it's not needed for the larger wastewater program, then maybe, you know, we take a recommendation to do that, take that, those actions to put a little more money into the bucket, if, if at all possible. Um, you know, like I said, I, my concern is primarily within the river watershed areas, um, not so much in the broader town, i- if, if that's not a priority, but the, the river corridor, I, I would prefer seeing it out to the 300-foot mark, and, um, you know, getting, because of the urgency and the severity of the water quality where we're at today, you know, base, frame it, frame it so that the mandates to upgrade are, are, are reflective of those, and acknowledge, acknowledging those, um, the severity of the situation, and, and, and I put it, make, mandate them for, you know, the 3, um, 3% uh, instead of the 5, because the 5 is insufficient, we know that.
Well.
If technology allows for it, I, I'm not sure what the technology's got.
Right now, the magic number is between 16 and 19.
I thought they could get it down to 3.
The facility that we are putting in for the town sewers has that type of technology, but.
But the IA system doesn't?
The IA system's because there's uses that can be done, there's general use, provisional use, and then, um, the other uses, which, uh, only a certain amount are allowed to be put into the state so they can monitor it and then upgrade it, or approve it for general use. So the items that are out for provisional and general use right now are ranging around 19 milligrams per liter, which is what the FAST 5, uh, .5 right now that most of the town is putting in, um, can do.
Yeah, whatever the technology is, to, you know, go with the strictest numbers, in my opinion, um, until something, technology catches up. Um, but I, I'd like to see it within the 300-foot buffer, uh, myself.
Original, two, two plus years ago, we had an assessment of 100 and 300. I agree with that buffer, but.
Do you include wetlands?
We still have to.
Yeah.
We still have to, you know.
I, I would too. I would agree.
Okay, so I'll.
Uh, we have someone in the audience that's like to speak. If no one objects, um, come forward.
Hi, very sorry. Um, very interesting conversation, and thank you. Susan Dangle, 762 Katuit Road. I actually emailed with Zach today. Um, my concern here with regard to freshwater is that freshwater is impacted really solely by phosphorus.
Phosphorus.
These IA systems do not remove phosphorus at all. So, um, it, there are cesspools on Mashpee Wakeby and all of the ponds, but perhaps there might be some other alternatives. We were, um, talking about going to see the Green Center, which has composting toilets, incinerating toilets, urine diverters, things that might be able to be combined with a Title V, not an IA, but a Title V with a cesspool, particularly given the long time that it's going to take to the ponds to get sewed. So I just hope that maybe you'll consider a lot of, an outside conversation about maybe some more things than just an IA system. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I'd be open to that, and, you know, even, even if neighborhood associations, uh, wanted to get, there's another technology, I think, that, uh, it's, it's like a small con-, smaller contained, uh, treatment, I forget the terminology for it. Um, it's good for three or four houses, uh, uh, small neighborhoods, rather than, it's not as big as a wastewater facility, um, but they're expensive, the cost, I, I can't think of the.
Like the Ruck system?
What's that?
Like the Ruck system?
I'm not familiar with that term.
Yeah, that's what we've got. It's expensive, and it's good.
They're expensive, but they do the job, and.
Oh, they do.
If, if a homeowner's association was willing to go down that road and share, share the cost as a development, then, you know, I'd be in favor of supporting that sort of thing as well. Um, you know, I think, I, I'd take any kind of community suggestions we have to try and address the problems. You know, I, I'm not as well-read as, uh, my predecessor, Mr. Gottlieb, a lot of this stuff, and, um, could use the input, actually.
Uh, the combined systems, that, they work great, the composting toilets, they remove a, a lot of the human fecal, uh, but you still have your showers, your dishwashers, your laundry, your sinks that all still need to go to a Title V system or a leaching field. Um, the thing is, is that a lot of people forget that even though you have the IA system, that's simply just the tank. Um, you still have to have the leaching field that's large enough to fit the amount of bedrooms. So if you did three houses on one, you'd have to span the leaching field, say they're all three bedrooms, for nine bedrooms to span across all their properties. Um, so we can, I can look into, uh, starting tomorrow, look into what is available out there right now, the number one thing, and the most available thing is the FAST system. I, uh, that's just what I've seen. I, I don't, I'm not part of their group or anything. Um, but, um, I can start drafting up something, uh, for you to look at and to agree to, to, that we can, uh, send out to the owners of the cesspools that we do find. If we make regulations, we do have to notify the DEP of our subsurface regulations, and they have to approve our regulations. Um, doesn't take very long, I just did it in my last town that I was in. Um, I can look at what Westport did, uh, as far as their regulations, because they made it mandatory for anybody on the water, because they're mostly a water-based town, uh, for IA systems. Um, they went through a lot of hoops, and it took a couple of years, but they got it through. Um, so with the mandate of upgrading to an IA system, we do have to have the teeth behind us. So we do have to say, this is the science, this is why, and this is the regulation that you have to, not only, because we have, the cesspools are banned in the town, but we don't have the regulation yet saying, you have to upgrade to an IA system. So we have to create that regulation, so that way we have something to send them saying, this is why you have to do it. So I can start working on that, um, and then once we get the extra help, we'll be able to get through it a lot quicker, to get which properties on the waterfronts have the cesspools, have the old Title V's that we need to upgrade. And, um, now that I've spoken with you and know exactly what you're looking for, I can curtin-tail it to fit the town's needs.
So you want to come back in a month?
Uh.
A little more than that? Sounds like you had a master plan going on.
He's looking for more time.
Couple of months?
Yeah, a couple of months, that'd be great, because I'm still getting my feet in the waters here, um, and seeing what the town needs specifically from my capabilities. And I'm learning quickly that, uh, we can do it. So I just need the time to be able to get these regulations down. Um, I'm very used, every town I go to, I end up having to write the regulations for it, so I'm, I'm kind of used to doing it. Um, but as long as I have the Select Board's backing, it makes my job a lot easier, because I'll have the Board of Health backing and the Select Board, whereas in one town, I did not have the Select Board, all of the Select Board's backing, so it was an uphill battle, but we got it through.
Anything you need from us, let us, the town managers know, and we'll get it on the agenda, uh, expeditiously, and, and put it to the group.
Yeah. The longer this takes, the more we'll, we'll hold you accountable.
Do they have a timeline when DEP will come up with their regulations?
DEP has not talked to us at all. Um, my last con-, uh, conversation with them was at the, at the open meetings, and, because I've gone to them all back in December. Um, the Mass Health Officers Association wrote them a letter saying they're not backing the way they're setting out the regulations, because they are in, they are writing the regulations, um, but they're not telling us how we are to enforce it. Uh, they're not telling the people how they can more afford it, and they're not telling us the magic number for the IA systems that they're going to need. So without those key elements, it, it's really, um, going against the tide.
Right now, Zachary, if someone comes to build a home in Mashpee, what do they, a brand-new home, what do they have to put in for a septic system?
It all depends on what zone they're in. If they're in a Zone 2, uh, which is the, which most of Mashpee is, um, they'll have to get an IA system, depending on the amount of rooms and the square footage.
Okay.
So right now, you can have four bedrooms to an acre, uh, or, and a bedroom, pretty much a bedroom to 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
Uh, if you want more bedrooms than that, you have to have the IA system to accommodate for that. Um, if we want to go forward and make this a very strict regulation, iron fist, we can, we can make it.
No more Title V's? They're not doing Title V's?
It depends on the location, because we don't have the regulation to make them not do it.
So can we ma-, can you make that?
That's what we're going to try to do.
Okay.
Uh, so that way, when you increase flow, change the footprint of your house, um, or build a new house, those are the key triggers, or sell your house, those are the key triggers for upgrading your septic system. So if these regulations are to what this board and the Board of Health prefer, then every time you upgrade a house or upgrade your septic system, it'll have to be an IA system. Um, as of right now, you're correct, Susan, there is no approved system for phosphorus. Uh, everybody's looking into it, because that is a major component. Um, it, it's unfortunate, because it's a solid. Uh, removing the fecal, removing the urine, that is a great way to reduce it, but it's not going to get to the point where the showers and the laundry chemicals and the sink and everything that, in that matter, uh, can affect. So if you give me a little bit of time, I, I think I can create something that you, well, we'll probably critique, but I think you'll like it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming in and, um, addressing us and coming up with some process of moving forward, and we really appreciate it and look forward to talking further on it.
Yeah, and, and what we can do, uh, until I get those regulations completed, um, I'll try to draft up a letter that we can look at and work on and to send the people with the cesspools that we find, but like I said, without the teeth behind it, we can't really, um, it's harder to enforce, so.
And the, and the DEP, the, the comment period, it's come to a close, or?
Yeah, they came to a close last month.
So, I mean, they should be making some sort of findings, um, I would imagine, soon, but the state should fund, they should allocate some funding to go along with the regulatory changes.
They, they should.
Especially in coastal regions, you know, it, it's only makes sense to, the regs have failed us to date, and so they have to, they really need to take a, a responsibility for it and, uh, allocate some funding.
Yeah, and, and, and that's what the major, one of the major problems is, is that they're not helping with the enforcement aspect of it. Uh, we all know that the state receives a lot of money. They could at least have a county representative from the state in the counties, so we could have a state representative on the Cape that can help us go and explain it to the people, or they can help with the enforcement.
I hope they're applying for some of this infrastructure funding and allocate through a subaward to regions. Um, you know, the Capes had the issues with the water for a long time now, and I don't know that it would comply or is eligible, but it seems as it should, uh, because it's infrastructure related to the, the water quality, um, it's not hard to make the connections between, between all that. Um, so I'm hoping that they go after infrastructure funds.
It would, you would hope so. Um, it was brought up at the, one of the meetings, and there was no answer to that, unfortunately.
Well, we look forward to seeing you again.
Always around.
Thank you, Zachary.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Everybody have a, uh, happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion approval of, uh, appointment of Shellfish Constable, Christopher Avis.
Yes, this process has been completed through DNR, and, uh, there is a provision in the statute in Mass General Laws that refers to the Select Board, so therefore, this is before you. But essentially, the process has run its course through DNR and, uh, and through my office, but, uh, there is a specific statute in Mass General Law that we want to cover to make sure that we have our enforcement covered.
Accept a motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Christopher Avis, Shellfish Constable.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Michaela? I'm a yes as well. That vote, motion is unanimous. A discussion on approval of the following appointment, Economic Development Industrial Corporation Commercial Rep, term expires June 30th, 2023, Rick Kair.
So moved.
Second.
So hearing of first and second on a motion to appoint Rick Air, uh, Kair, um, to the Economic Development Industrial Corporation. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, so, as I went through, uh, Mr. Kair's resume or his, his letter, there were a couple of things that came to my mind, and this has got nothing to do with Mr. Kair, um, but I was looking at the composition of the board, and the composition when we look at the commercial reps.
That's what he's filling is the commercial.
Exactly. I'm curious as to, all right, so this has nothing to do with Mr. Kair, it also has nothing to do with people who are in the real estate, um, industry, and in general. In fact, I used to have a real estate license, so it's not that. Um, what I did wonder is some diversity on the board. So we have a real estate rep already for that. I'm wondering, as I'm thinking about, as we envision, um, a future for Mashpee in this regard in 20 years, if it weren't possible to be considering somebody who might be from the small business community, or have an IT background, or an accounting person who could be looking at cost benefit analysis.
There's a banker.
Yeah.
And there's a real estate, commercial.
But you're two, but we have, so we have two, and again, this is nothing pejorative about the real estate agency. I'm just wondering if we could bring somebody in or consider bringing somebody in who would bring a different perspective. So you have the real estate perspective there, um, maybe another type of, not the type of business, technology, um, as I said, accounting, any, any other way of looking at this so that you had a diversity of perspectives? That's what came to my mind.
I mean, I, I mean, my point is, you, you get candidates that are interested in a position.
And now we have a full board.
It's.
It's made up.
I, I mean, you get an interesting candidate, we, we have a committee that, I, I understand what you're saying, it's just, but it's not like we're going out shopping, saying, hey, do you want to fill this role? Do you want to fill this role? I mean, we, and we, and there are a lot of committees with open seats, that, you know, diverse, I mean, diversity is good, but it's also, I mean, economic development, they have some expertise in the field that they're going to serve.
Right.
That's kind of a good thing.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Um, it's, it's not that I disagree with you that that's an important perspective to have, but I think we, I would consider economic development more than that, right? So we have the real estate perspective, which is, which is critical. I think that's really important to have. I'd like to see us try to find another perspective to bring to that. So you have a variety of people coming together. I think, um, as I said, if we look at a vision for the future, if you have a little more diversity, it helps people in those conversations, and it helps to plan. How, how have we advertised?
Um, well, how heavy was it advertised?
No, I said, how, how, what was the process?
We worked with the chamber?
How, how have we tried to find somebody?
And we work with, um, we bring in speakers like Open Cape to find out. And businesses, um, if a business wants to open up in, in town, um, they come through us. We help them with the funding, uh, to start their business. And we work with the chamber, we work with, uh, the, um, the town clerk, because you have to register your business. And there's a process of a sign for your business where you go to the planning board, uh, I mean, the planning department, to start your business. Um, it's more or less, uh, we help people coming into town that wanna start a business or looking to start a business.
And my apologies, I don't think I made my question clear.
Are you referring to the advertising?
I was, at, how have we sought to diversify this? How have we advertised for this position?
Is that every once in a while, we'll regularly put an ad in the newspaper for the purposes of any vacancies that we may have.
Yeah, thank you. But that's, that's my, that's my answer.
No, I agree. Um, I'm a big advocate for having diversity, um, in the composition of boards and committees and would like more people to step up and, um, so we have options. I do understand that, you know, there's not a lot of people tripping over themselves to join boards and committees, so it's problematic, but-
That is true.
Wherever and whenever possible, we should, um, try to get more folks to, uh, for a diverse, um, composition. Um, any other concerns or discussion? I guess I'd entertain a motion to move forward and appoint, um, where we only have the one applicant, um, submitting a letter of interest and it's been supported by the committee?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, uh, roll call, vote. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
No.
Um, I'm a yes. Motion passes, uh, with one no. Michaela? Communications and Correspondents, Old Business, Discussion, Approval and Ratification of Safe Popinessa Bay Inc. and the Town of Mashpee, Eastman.
You guys have, uh, have seen this before. Um, this is just updated because of the officers were not correct on Safe Popinessa's side. And there were a few changes that need to be made, uh, and they had to get their, uh, report in. So it's just, uh, they have signed at this point, everything is good. It's gone by our legal, so it should, should be all set.
I'd accept a motion, uh, to approve the ratifications of Safe Pop- Popinessa Bay Inc. and the Town of Mashpee, Eastman, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, uh, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Under New Business, we have discussion of future election locations, um, with our town clerk, Deborah K. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I promised to speak very quickly. I'm, I'm hungry. Um, I'm here tonight because the time has come to move out of the school. I mean, I've been the town clerk since 1998. And I've heard over the years the necessity to consider moving. And it's becoming more apparent over the years when you watch the news. Every time something goes on, it's always in the school system. I've heard from the parents, I've heard from the faculty. And I've also had, uh, concerns raised about, um, the elderly having problems walking up to the gymnasium. I always, for years, looked for a place where I could move five precincts, but, um, that is not a possibility. So when I sat down and started thinking about breaking up the five precincts into different locations, it's always with the presidential election in mind that you think about this because that brings out the highest amount of traffic. And yes, today, we have early voting by mail and in person before Election Day, but we still have a number of voters, and the number of voters is increasing exponentially in Mashpee as we go forth. When I started working in the clerk's office, there were maybe 8,600 residents and even less voters. Today, we have over 14,000 residents and over 12,000 voters. So the, the time has come. So I sat down with Mr. Collins and, um, mapped out a plan that we move the two precincts that are down in this area of town to Town Hall. We move precincts one and two to the senior center. And we move precinct five, which is one of our biggest, to the library. These three locations have sufficient parking for maximum two precincts. So I'm here to ask you to vote to move out of the, um, gymnasium beginning this May 6th election with precincts three and four at Town Hall, precincts one and two at the senior center, and precinct five at the high school.
And-
Go ahead, Tom, manage.
Um, I should point out that one of the, uh, issues that I've been hearing is from the, uh, school committee members and the superintendent. And essentially, I've taken the message and, uh, relayed it to the town clerk. And, uh, thank you for working with me. I appreciate it, uh, very, very much. Um, but, uh, the school does not want the voting over there. They just do not, and they've made it abundantly clear. So as an alternative, I think, uh, you have the best plan put forward.
I think the spaces that they've picked are perfect. Four precincts, one and two here, and three and four at the senior center.
Yeah, the representative from the Secretary of State's office came down a couple of weeks ago. We went around to all three locations and, um, every one of the locations is handicap accessible. The walk for senior citizens or anyone with a, a, um, an impediment has, wouldn't have the problems that they have today. Walking up that hill is tough.
So for me, um, you know, when I first heard about this and, um, reading over it, I, I guess, looking at it from a matter of convenience and making things more accessible to the people in, um, particular districts, I was wondering, the proximity with the library and the senior center being kinda close together. Um, I talked to Wayne about it and was wondering, you know, if, uh, the fire station was considered and if that would be any kind of viable option.
You know, you have to keep in mind the age, the age group. You don't want somebody who's coming up and having an emergency vehicle screaming out at them. Um, I've run rabies clinics out of the fire station. It's, it's, you know, November, it's cold. And, uh, drafty, you're, where would you put the, um, there's no place to put a, a precinct in the fire station. Unless you go into the bays and, I can't have my volunteers freezing in a bay every time the garage door goes up.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was just wondering if it was considered because it, just to spread them out a little bit, um, more equally throughout the town.
Well, it's, it wasn't something I just, you know, three and four, precincts three and four are down at this end of town. So it'd be convenient for them to be able to come here to Town Hall. And, uh, precincts one and two have a higher senior population. They're, they, they know the senior center. And, um, precinct five is, is just a large precinct, so I kept it separate.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
I can't think of, you should get your hands full just getting notification out as to the changes to be made, signage and, and whatnot.
Actually, um, in anticipation and hope that you would approve it tonight, um, I am prepared tomorrow morning, after the Secretary of State's office is notified of this change, we will go live on my webpage that a voter can go right to, it says right on there, where do I vote? And when they type in their name, it comes back, it tells them what precinct they, they're in and where they would be voting. We will be sending out vote, uh, cards to head of household voters so that we keep the cost down, notifying them of the change of precinct locations. We will do, as we get closer to the election, we'll have it in the paper. We'll do it on the Mashpee Facebook pages. We'll, we'll hammer the airwaves. We can even consider doing a reverse 911. I'm not sure how many people who are not voters in Mashpee would get that call, but it is something we can do also.
Maybe you can put a, uh, the school will let you put a sign down there letting them know that the voter location-
We're gonna have to consider putting a sign there because people are going to go out of habit to the, uh, school. So I am prepared to put a sign there, um, telling people, you know, to call the office, I guess, would be the fastest way. And then we can tell them exactly where to go to vote.
I think Rodney volunteered to stand down there and point everybody in the right direction.
Well, you know it's gonna happen.
I, well, that's why we're going to have signs at the school on Election Day until everybody gets used to the change. And change is good.
Yeah. No, but it's a long walk for an elderly person. And that, that slow walkway, it can be a long walk.
Right.
So I'd accept a motion, um, oh, go ahead, John.
Um, Debbie, so just a quick question. Um, will, uh, will you continue with early voting at the Town Hall for all precincts?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, so-
As a matter of fact, in my memo tonight, I'm also asking you to, I was gonna wait till after you voted, but I'm also asking that you can, um, vote to approve, um, early voting in person for May, for the May 6th election. This is an annual vote. I'd like to see how the voters partake. We don't have to stay nights, we don't have to do weekends. It would be during the day so we could get an idea if the voters like coming to vote early in person here at Town Hall.
Okay, and that would be for all precincts in the Town Hall?
For all precincts. So we'll have early voting by mail, we'll have early voting in person if you approve it, and the change.
And I just think that, that being highly advertised as well, just so people are like, oh, with the change of precinct, do I go, just as long as you're, you know, you're gonna have to-
We've got it under control.
Um, and just my second question, sorry, Mr. Chair, um, was, it, I don't think, it doesn't sound like there's an increase in, because you have, the scanners are all by precinct anyways. So it's, it's not more money, but I'm assuming it's just more-
Volunteers.
Volunteers in managing?
Nothing will change as far as volunteers go because they were at the school in one location. Now they'll just be in another.
Indifferent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd accept a motion, uh, to approve, uh, town clerk's recommendation that Mashpee precincts be moved to the following locations. Precinct one and two would move to the Council on Aging, 26 Frank E. Hicks Drive. Precincts three and four would move to the Town Hall, Walk White and Oakway Meeting Rooms. Uh, 16 Great Neck Road North and precinct five would move to the library event room. 64 Steeple Tree, Steeple Street, bro.
So moved.
Second.
Having a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously. I would also accept a motion to offer Mashpee voters the opportunity to vote in person beginning at 8:30 a.m. on April 19th, 2023, through 4:30 p.m. on April 26th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Uh, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you and good luck.
Well, good job.
Do I need to stay for the charter review process?
You may want to.
Uh, up next, discussion of, uh, charter review process and charter review committee. So, um-
Yeah, you should have the piece out of the charter.
Yep.
We do. So the charter review, um, per the bylaws, um, is to be reviewed every 10 years. Um, we're coming up on that. So in anticipation of, uh, the 10-year mark, the 2024, I wanted to put the committee, um, on the table and, uh, get started with that so that we're, um, when 2024 hits, we have something to move forward. And the committee's had time to do, uh, ample due diligence and reviewing, uh, the charter.
Nine members.
So it is composed of nine members. Um, the select board, um, has two. And the school committee also has two, and the finance committee has two. Uh, the other competent, co- composition of the committee would be, uh, two persons, uh, from the planning board. Uh, no, the planning board shall designate one person and two persons shall be appointed by the town moderator.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be on that board.
Um, I, I too would like to be on the board, uh, on the, on the committee.
Mm-hmm.
I think also-
I would as well.
Michaela had expressed interest when she heard, uh, about it as well. So now as far as the appointment of the committees, um, how, how does that work? The-
The, you should, I think you just, uh, outlined the composition. So you, the board, I think, has two?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
Each committee is on their own as far as-
To nominate.
Appointments.
Yes, yeah, so you would, this-
And then we would reaffirm those appointments based on the recommendations of the committees.
Yeah, the, the board gets two, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes. Uh, but it-
So we're looking to appoint two members to the board tonight?
I've got it here.
Or?
Yeah, total of nine, as you said, Mr. Chair. So the planning board would obviously, uh, designate one person, school committee two.
So, you know, are we looking to appoint two members tonight? Or is this more of a discussion in how long, when is this, when should everyone be appointed?
I don't think you have to do it tonight.
We don't have to do it tonight.
Do we have a schedule as to when the meetings are gonna take place?
Well, we're gonna want, uh, it, uh, being established uh, because, uh, if I'm not mistaken, and you were here at that time, I think it's, uh, the anniversary is night, uh, 2004.
Right.
Yeah, but, um, '23 is, um-
So it would be formed in '23.
Correct. Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, if you, if I, if I may, um, so I'd like to, uh, recommend, uh, Carol Sherman for- Mr. Chair, if you, if I, if I may, so I'd like to recommend Carol Sherman for charter review.
We're not going to postpone. I think we're going to postpone for further conversation. No?
No.
Hey, he just, that's what
That we're just not
They're trying to get this going.
Organize it.
I'll second Carol.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Yes.
Tom? Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. I nominate, I'd accept a motion to nominate Michaela as someone else expressing interest.
I make a motion to nominate David. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you for that, and look forward to working with you, Carol.
Mm-hmm. Now the other committees can start designating their members. Good.
Update on fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program plan. Town manager, Rodney Thomas.
Well, I know I had some select board members there today, so the only thing I can really say, sir, is there's nothing to report this evening. There's a lot of moving parts to the CIP, and the cost have gone up and down like a roller coaster. So the only thing I can really say is we want to make sure that we have firm and accurate numbers, and we also want to make sure that some of the information that is forthcoming at, I don't want to say the 11th hour, but came in just about at the 11th hour. We want to make sure that they're, they're accurate and accounted for. So I was not comfortable taking it into this board this evening, and therefore, long story short, it was put on hold this evening, and, or this afternoon, I should say. And I will have more to report at your next meeting.
Appreciate it. Discussion of joint meetings with regard to water quality. I think the last time we brought it up, we were considering maybe having some meetings in between our regularly scheduled meetings, specifically for the purpose of water quality discussions. Is everyone kind of still thinking those? That's the way, direction we want to go?
Yeah, I mean, my only concern would be is if we bring in too many at once, but that's only because when we had them before, we broke them up, and it, there was, we were, I mean, we were up against the time. If we bring in all the committees at once, I, I don't think we're going to get anything accomplished, and someone's going to be slighted.
Can I, can I suggest something?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, would you like a joint meeting with the Board of Health? I mean, obviously, there was some discussion here tonight. I think it's important that the board hear directly from the select board, the executive body.
That makes a lot of sense.
I like that.
And, and I just think the time is ripe, and I think the Board of Health would, I presume, enjoy hearing from the executive body, and, and you can have a meeting just with them, and, and just a suggestion.
I think that's a good idea.
I like the idea. It seems like a good place to start with tonight, after tonight's discussion. So I'm definitely in favor of having that as the first joint meeting.
So we'll schedule that for you, sir.
Right. And then, any discussion?
I was going to say, it would be good to have these smaller meetings and then bring everybody together.
Right.
I think it, I think it's beneficial to have everybody together, but to your point, to start that way might be cumbersome. So to start having smaller meetings, and then after we've kind of ironed out what people are thinking, to bring people together so that everybody understands what every other board is thinking, I think would be useful.
And, and just for clarity, this will be scheduled on one of the Mondays where we're not scheduled, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Just so it doesn't interfere with normal business?
And it'll be the only, and it'll be the only thing scheduled?
Only item. Right.
Great.
I guess homework would be to just think of who you wanted to meet with next to give advance notice at our next meeting, kind of strategize.
And perhaps we could be looking at immediate strategies, immediate strategies, long-term strategies, and kind of thinking that through with the boards.
Discussion points. Any discussion points you want to bring forward to Town Meter's, Town Manager's attention, send directly to Town Manager and not the entire board?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Additional topics, liaison reports? Any liaison reports? None, water quality updates?
I, I have one thing about water quality, just thinking about what Sue Dangle came to talk to us about. Perhaps at our next meeting or subsequent meeting, we could look at some of the alternatives to IAs that would make a difference around the ponds and fresh water.
That's what we can talk about with the Board of Health.
That's an excellent idea, and then we could bring it here, and, yes.
That would be good.
Although, the only thing about that is Brian is no longer on the Board of Health.
So we can talk, so we can talk more freely.
Brian is no longer on the Board of Health, correct? So, but Brian's information, I don't know if anyone, everyone, anyone else has visited the, the base and his testing, you know, systems, but if we could possibly
Bring him in.
Ask him to come in?
I think it would be good to bring him in and put him underwater quality, and just kind of inform us on, you know, what the latest technology is. He, he's the ideal person for that.
He very well could come in, even though he's no longer a member of the Board of Health.
Well, he, I'm just suggesting, if, if you could, if we could ask him to join us for the
For that meeting.
For the, for that meeting with the Board of Health.
And ensure that we have phosphorus on there as well as nitrogen
Right.
to get to her point with regard to fresh water.
He still works at the county, right?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So I was just wondering if we wanted to bring him in underwater quality in advance of that, and kind of educate us on what the latest technology is, kind of things they're working at, at the facility for the county, to inform us before we get to the joint meeting?
Before the meeting?
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, okay.
If he's able and willing, I mean, I don't want to tie up all his time.
So we'll, we'll check and see if he can come in at your next meeting, and then if not, then that will play into when we schedule your meeting with the Board of Health, subject to running it by you.
And if he only has time to do one or the other, then I'd prefer him at the joint meeting.
And maybe he didn't even send us a lot of just explaining what's, any of it, anything that's happened.
Right.
I know he's got a couple of DNI systems out there that are very
Town manager report, the updates?
Yes, our town auction ended on Friday and raised approximately $100,000, believe it or not. Town meeting articles were due today at 4:30. We've got right now, and I haven't had a chance to take a look at them all, in fact, I've only glanced at a couple. We've got 37 annual town meeting articles, 29 submitted by departments and boards, two road-taking petitions, and six other petition articles. Some are duplicate articles submitted by boards or departments.
Was that all?
That's it, sir.
Nothing in executive session, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.